All the meetings.
All right, someone who didn't just take a bite? Would that be me? Okay, I guess I can start. So I recently, okay, so I haven't done any of the stuff that we're supposed to do. I'll just preface it with that. So NASB has a annual conference, which was virtual. So I attended that. And then I am now officially off the board of directors for NASB after three long years, which is three years plus an additional, when was I on the board for like another three years earlier when you were on the board? And yeah, so I'm on board membership with NASB. But they had their first board meeting in person for the first time since I actually took over as chair of NASB, which would have been in October 2019. My daughter was a month old in Omaha. So after that board meeting, we never met in person again until this is the first time. So the immediate past chair, who was the chair, he asked me to fly out for it. So I went out for it just to provide some historical perspective over, you know, the last couple of years because our boards changed significantly. And so that was really nice to see everybody in person. And they also asked me to chair or co-chair. The NASB has an equity committee. So I'm chairing it with an executive, a board executive from John Paul Hayworth. You know, John Paul, right? From DC. So he's, some state boards have board executives. So it would be an executive, basically a staff person for the board. And so John Paul is the executive for the State Board of Education in Washington DC. So he and I are co-chairing it. And we are going to have one member from every region on it. So I'm serving as a central member also since I'm co-chairing it. And then, and then we have the immediate past chair, Byron, who's from Indiana. And then we're going to have someone from the Southern and Western as well. And then also, so really excited. We're going to spend the next six months just kind of talking about our framework, equity kind of framework, what lens we want to look through, what our goals are. And then we'll report to the board at the legislative conference in March, NASB's legislative conference, which you, everyone should think about attending. Well, not everyone, probably can't afford that, but some people should. And then from there, we're going to kind of have set out some goals. And we're basically going to have an equity framework for, and provide equity lens for all decisions that NASB's board directors makes as well as NASB staff kind of makes as well. So, yeah.
Is there an NCOCE representative on the committee?
No, there's not.
Might I put you in touch with NCOCE's current chair?
Yeah.
All right, because I think that that would be a.
Yes. She's from Colorado? Is that, yeah, okay. She wasn't at the meeting, but I think maybe she may be attended virtually. But yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, okay. Are you guys going to be in person next year? Okay, fair enough, okay. Yes, absolutely. And I will work on the other stuff. Well, actually, you know, Des Moines is changing, Des Moines School District is, Burpul County SOB is thinking about changing their calendar. Is it Des Moines School District? I guess it's Des Moines School District. So they actually sent out, and I get these notifications because my son attended a preschool that was in, it was Science Center, it was part of that. And so they're changing their yearly calendar or thinking about changing it. So they're going to put on it. So I was like, oh, that should be the one that I attend because they're going to put on it.
The year round, do you have, guess it's going to year round?
No, they're not going to year round, but they're like, so they wanted to include more, I guess, like culturally responsive holidays so throughout the year. And then also they, well, their first proposal, I think, was going to have them getting out in like mid-June, but they kind of took that back to, because I think usually they get out around the first of June. Does Norwalk get out? When does Norwalk usually get?
I think it's about like end of May.
End of, okay, yeah. So, and also to, because of learning loss as well, having that, you know, June, July, I guess, and like half of August off. So they wanted to go a little bit further in June. So now it's, yeah, so now it's going to be, I think they, because they had like a week-long break, so just having more breaks throughout the year, some around holiday, other, you know, culturally or religious holidays to, I think, represent members of the community. And then they had like a long break in May, which I was all in favor for because I like traveling throughout the school year rather than the summer, you know? But they nixed that and shortened it by a week because people, because they put out for public comments, we're not, we're like, why do you have a week-long break in May? Which I get too, but whatever. So, yeah. So around, I think, June 9th or something is what the proposal is with some breaks in there. So, and you know, provide more professional development for teachers and stuff like that, too.
They're looking at June 6th as a landing date, last I saw.
Okay. And then they maybe had some like cushion in there for like no days or whatever.
Yeah, I didn't read it that far. I just saw June 6th.
Yeah, we'll see. Who knows if they'll actually put it or not?
I can go now. I did visit, was with a few of my superintendent friends before the meetings. And obviously staffing shortages are on their radar. One with teaching and associates and others just, and bus drivers and everybody else. The other one was more concerned about that they're professionals finding people to fill those roles. One was concerned about the increasing accreditation requirements when it comes to CTE and field experience and everything else that's going on when there's kind of a shortage of people to begin with, just verbalizing the concern on that. Also an issue as far as vaccine mandates, where that's going to land and some uncertainty, is that going to be the law or not the law? And how are we going to find out this information? So nothing that we don't know about, but when you hear about it firsthand in some of the trials and tribulations in the field, that's important. Also, an underlying theme is there's still a lot of stress as far as with COVID and dealing with that and all the ramifications. So there's, so there's that. And if there's staffing shortages and people are looking to pick up extra duties, which then creates additional stress and whatever. I did have a personal note, I did serve on accreditation team for Columbia, Florida. Couple of things that are interesting is that they are viewed as a small school. And a small school in Iowa would be, what? 1,200, 1,300 kids. They have 9,000 kids in their small school. Something that was interesting though, and I asked if this was typical, is that the county school, their superintendent is elected by the residents in that school district or in that county. And I guess that's not typical throughout Florida. I guess it's a local choice. But I thought it did create kind of an interesting dynamic between the superintendent and the school board because the school board didn't hire the superintendent as the superintendent. I also agreed to do another accreditation visits in Burness County Public Schools of North Carolina that'll be coming up in February than I have one in Minnesota with charter schools. That's what I've been doing.
Very cool.
I can go next. I met with the superintendent of the Denison Schools and what was supposed to be a conversation about Career Academy, though we did speak about it. A new program that they started with the Western Iowa Community College that has campus our community. But really, a lot of our time was spent on staff shortages and how are we going to, you know, how are we going to move on in the future when we don't have the folks there? One of the programs that Denison has enjoyed for years is a program called American Heritage, which is basically history and English melded into one block of instruction with two instructors. The one instructor who was teaching the history portion of that was promoted to dean of students of the middle school. And so now we have a teacher who is an English teacher trying to fill both roles. And, but we voted out and got many applications of anybody that was interested in coming on. So they're trying again. They, they think they might have somebody in the works that might be able to come in and fill that position. The Career Academy is something new that the district has started working on this back into this year with the community college where they'll be offering more college courses and career paths for students to be able to earn that college credit at the same time that they're getting their high school. So it's been its early stages, but it looks like it's going to be a pretty good partnership.
I, along with Director Bo, attended Career Connection, NICC in Kalmar. Hadn't been to NICC in Kalmar, I've been to the one, obviously, in Piast, many times. And it was a real eye-opener. We talked a bit before about, you know, the connection and students in high school getting jobs, really high-paying jobs, like while they're being educated. Ran into a couple of clients from that way that are construction companies. They were, one of them was a big sponsor of this. And just so excited to participate. I think as much from the aspect of keeping kids in their inner, near their hometowns and gainful employment. Dr. Wee is a great man. I don't know if any of you have met him, but, I mean, obviously you have. He's retiring soon from NICC, but he's really got them on a course where they're connecting with business and all over Northeast Iowa. And I think he's on the right path. Just thought I'd pass that around if anybody wants to have it or see it. It was very good. I know that in the community school district, the superintendents of the two I'm going to meet with had to reschedule, but busing is a huge issue right now, you know? Because it's hard to get people to drive the bus.
Did you do any of the simulations?
I did. As a matter of fact, I learned to change the oil in the car. It was so, I gotta tell you this, it almost cost us money because they put, you know, you know how you put the.
The VR goggles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kids know, young people know. But I, so I had this on and I was, you know, reach for this, do that, do this. And pretty amazing. And then they said, set the, you know, I went to go, like I was finished and I was going to set this thing on the table. Well, the table, there's no table. The guy is next to me, the Risco guy who keeps emailing me, by the way, just email you. I mean, I don't, I don't know. Anyway, he just sends stuff, but, but like propaganda kind of stuff. But anyway, I crash, you know, this is very expensive piece of equipment. Fell three feet, said, ah, no, don't worry about it. It's designed for that. But it was, you know, there was, there was heavy equipment, end loaders and things like that. There was semi-tractor driving and it was very realistic. And they had, you know, actual, I mean, the instructors are people that do this every day and they kind of mentor the students. And they're going to NI, you know, high school or NICC to get their two-year degree or whatever, but they're also being paid at the same time. It's like win, win, win. So anyway, I was impressed.
I think students are taking on a lot of duties because of that, like a heavy course load, heavy internships that they're doing. I mean, they're getting paid for them, but I think students are under a lot because of that too. There's a lot of requirements.
There were a lot of stories also shared about, oh, I didn't know what to do, so I went to Iowa or I went wherever and I got a lot of debt and I came out, I didn't really graduate on time and I have all this debt and no job and I got a degree in X. I'm never going to mention anything. But it's not, you know, doesn't convert to cash.
Yep.
It was interesting.
Well, I met with our superintendent at Marshalltown Community Schools and ditto, ditto, ditto. Basically the same conversation. We talked a little bit about the school board election, which was not nearly as contentious in Marshalltown and some districts around the state. But it was interesting to hear his perspective, some of the communications he had had around. You know, in addition to dealing with COVID and work staff or staff shortages, not just teachers, but staff, and social and emotional issues, you know, then, then he was bombarded with all the, you know, school board stuff before the election. And I just felt like, man, those, those people are really, they're really pressured right now. Yesterday I had lunch, you know, at Rotary, I sat at a table with our high school principal and she had brought a new hire, a social worker, high school social worker, to the meeting. So I had a chance to visit with her and just hearing her talk about social, emotional and issues. It's just, it is eye-opening when you realize what our teachers and staff are dealing with. And, and I think it's a great hire that, that they've made with her. I met briefly with our state legislator from our area and we, basically she asked me to keep her informed of asks, things that the department is looking at. And so I will stay in touch with her as, after your report today and as things go on with that.
I have nothing to report.
Let me just share with you that my son was a professor at University, University and they have really done a great job in recovering from where they were seven years ago. In fact, it's a whole new world and he does a great job. And we need to have him in sometime and say, talk to us a little bit about online learning and what you're conveying to the new post-grad students and what they're learning. Again, great conversations. My daughter is a guidance counselor to Spencer Public School System. Yeah, that's just scary. She's a mother to about 600 kids.
Yeah.
It's scary what she has to do and provide. Fortunately, there are a lot of, a lot of helps in that community too. But those are conversations that are just really good, I think, to help me focus as a board member. And I have attended, I don't know how many activities in different school districts over the past month or so, six weeks, as far as council plus or Dodge. And it's always interesting to get a grizzled eye view of what's going on. Trying to collect as much information as I can, be as helpful as I can, participate action in things within the school district I live in. So anyway, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a few updates. For me personally, I'm trying to get more aware of like the legislative process. I applied for the USN youth program and was selected as a finalist for that. Those decisions will come out next week. So that would be really interesting because I think that it's, I would get to know a little bit more about the national level of legislation and legal processes. But then also I presented the best conference last week. I, I haven't been at school very much. I've been missing one to three days of school consistently. I don't think I've been at a full week of school since August, maybe. So I've been very active in presenting at a lot of different opportunities. The best conference was one of them. I organized two different sessions. One of them was on service learning and we used the conditions for learning data to walk through how you could implement a service learning project to involve students really as full partners in their education, examining that data. And then the second one was a student panel. And so it was about the school's social, emotional learning environment and school climate. And the questions were not guided in this way in any way, but the conversation shifted wholeheartedly towards equity within schools and what improvements needed to be made within our districts and within the state education system as a whole. So that was very, very interesting. We had two sessions of each of those areas. I'm also continuing, continuing my, my superintendent within our district. So it's been interesting to see how that's gone with school board elections and how, it seems like in a lot of districts, equity work is kind of being pushed to the side just because unfortunately the climate of the communities is pushing against a lot of equity work. And so we have to be very timid and like very politically smart in that work. And so I think that as a student, that's oftentimes frustrating. And I have my whole afternoon off and I'm also the co-founder of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Club at our school. We're doing a lot of work and so the whole afternoon, we kind of meet and have conversations with students in our school and we're seeing the struggles that they're facing and they're just not being addressed. So I know that that's one issue that's still very prevalent, but I feel like it's being pushed to the side a little bit now. But within that work, we started, we're meeting with sociologists, psychologists, educators to figure out how we can improve our own school climate. We started this housing system where we trained like 65 students to leave roundtable discussions every month on things like empathy, to have conversations on things that people don't necessarily get to have conversations on in school. So that went really well, but I think that a lot of students are getting burnt out. And so that's something that we need to be aware of as well. I think that what I heard from my superintendent is teachers are almost more burnt out this year than they were last year. And they can't figure out exactly why. But I think that with teachers, the same thing is what happens in schools, some schools start going to class, doesn't matter. But yeah, that's kind of what I had to update. Oh, other than that, I think there's a national push to like ban books from schools. That's happening within my own districts. So I think that's also something that's very interesting as well. And then also I'm continuing to do my work with Iowa Student Learning Institute. We have our RISE conference coming up this Saturday. And so it's the thing that got me involved in all of this stuff. And so we have like 120 students for that. That's going to be very exciting to be onboarded, a new team of 17 members, 17 new student members for Iowa SLI. So yeah, that's kind of my updates.
Good for you.
And I've also been meeting with a couple of different teachers from districts to help them develop their leadership programs as well. So that's also something we can do.
Wow.
Good for you.
Very cool.
You do the work for all of us.
I know, right? Okay. All right, so charter schools and innovation zone schools and Iowa legislative report. All right. Back again. Our last charters, well, two items. It'll be very quick, but go ahead, Gina.
Well, we're here to recommend that the board approve the submission of the charter and innovation zone schools legislative report to Iowa Legislature. And in that report, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, starting on page three. There's a, there's a change and of course the authority. Point out is no new charter schools will be authorized under Iowa Code 256F. So this is the, the original law. And then it goes on to talk about where the authority for the report comes from. The charter schools under this code are Storm Lake Early College Charter, Central Charter High School. Storm Lake is for renewal this spring. So, and then of course, as always, the appendices are self-reported. So the data that you get in this report comes from the charter. Then on the next page, I talk a little bit about supervisory visits. I did not go onsite, of course, because of COVID. We did, you know, we touched base virtually, email, phone, some of the things. Both districts are financially stable. The, under the evaluation portion, there was a change to A.
Which page are you on, Gina?
I'm on page five. Got excited there. On page five, there was a change to A. You'll see it was amended by House File 228. Then on the very next page, page six, we did put a little section in there about the new code. And then the recommendations are a little different because, you know, of course, there's not going to be any more new schools under this code. So kind of looking at examining, you know, annually, we'll still do this annually as long as there's schools under this, under this code. And then just, you know, the information here, we talk a little bit about examining the data and then of course, you know, we'll examine the data as they come up for renewal. That is that report.
Are there any questions on this charter school report? No? So, go ahead to the next.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yes, yes.
I would move that we approve the submission of the charter innovation zone schools legislative report.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, much in case. Thank you. Thank you.
It's been hard work.
On the, the next report is the state, the title, we again recommended that, we're recommending that the state board approve the submission of the charter school legislative report. And this is for Code Section 256E dot 12. So I never know if I say that quite right, but this is basically the, kind of the same report, only it's for the new law. And so.
Go ahead.
I just, there's not much content here.
Still needed to submit the report as required, but we don't have any charter schools under the new law, so it's a short report. Is there a motion?
I would move to accept it for.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? All right, much in case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry. Maryam, okay. Have we had a schedule or something?
Yes.
No way.
I will go see, I'm Larry.
Oh my goodness, we're ahead of schedule. This is amazing. That's funny. I think we were. We just, we just caught up.
Sorry, it's David again. Did you all hear the message that I, that you now have access to that shared drive thanks to Todd Waddell?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't hear through my headphones at the time.
I think, I think we're muted when we were, when we were responding to them, I think we're muted maybe.
Yeah, I think you couldn't hear us, but yes, we did receive that. Thank you, David. Hi, Larry.
Hi, sorry.
Hi.
Way ahead.
I know, this is like the one time this hasn't happened.
Behind.
You gotta keep us on schedule now.
At least I'm not between you and lunch, so.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, yes.
State of Ed prep report. And my colleague, Maryam Rodzabel, will be along in a second. Our other colleague, Matt Ludwig, isn't able to be here today. This is a report that we provide to the state board and to the programs and to any other stakeholders. We publish it on the website to inform the current work of Ed prep programs in the state. It comes from annual reports. It comes from annual surveys of beginning teachers, beginning administrators. And it has four sections. It has descriptive statistics, data on surveys, narrative data from reports, and information on program reviews and innovations. The descriptive statistics, you know, is probably going to be no shock to anybody. It just, it correlates to everything that we've been hearing about teacher shortages. We have a continued decline, to exacerbate that, we have a continued decline in the number of educators being prepared in the state of Iowa because we have a shortage, continued decline in the number of people that are entering teacher education programs. Some, some good things that we've seen in here, though, we survey all beginning teachers every year and we survey their principals. And then we survey all beginning principals and their superintendents. And we use basically the standards they're prepared on to see how well does the teacher feel he or she is prepared to do this work? And how well does the principal perceive he or she is, is doing the work? And, and you can see the data in there. Um, and, and you can see the data in there, um, but what we, what we saw this time for teachers in particular was, um, area in need of improvement where differentiating for students with special needs and, um, differentiating for students who are English language learners. So those are the two big areas we saw in surveys. Interestingly, we surveyed, these aren't in the standards, but we surveyed how well they're prepared to work in MTSS and how well they're prepared to work in a pandemic. Now, these are students, the teachers graduated in twenty twenty, and they were surveyed in the spring of twenty twenty-one, and their preparation to, to work in a pandemic, and it's things like, um, teaching well, teaching online, it's like keeping, um, their own mental health in check, keeping the mental health of their students in check, all of those things, the teachers ranked themselves fairly low. The, the number of teachers who, who, uh, said well or very well prepared, you know, was in the like forty percent range, but their principals rated those same teachers well or, or fairly well prepared in the seventy and eighty percent range. So, you know, we were, we were kind of happy to see that. And then principals of the same thing. Principals ranked themselves, rated themselves as not strongly prepared to work in a pandemic, but their superintendents, um, you know, it's like thirty points higher. So we're happy to see those kind of numbers, even though those aren't in the standards. We, we gave you some information on test pass rates. Every, um, every person who is being prepared to be a teacher must pass a test of content and pedagogy at the end of that program in order to be complete, completed and recommended for a license, whether that's in Iowa or any other state. Um, and our, our pass rates are pretty good. They're above the national average, um, on the content test, and they're, the, the pedagogy test, the knowledge of teaching, um, the, the lowest test, or three grade level test, lowest one is a little over ninety-five percent pass rate. Um, and then the, um, performance assessment that, uh, performance assessment that University of Iowa uses and a couple of other colleges use sporadically, we had a hundred percent pass rate on that. So our students are coming out of there knowing, you know, at least they're able to pass this national test at, at a pretty good rate. We gave you some information on program assessments, and we gave you some information on the summary of the academic reviews or the program reviews. Three of them we're going to present to you here in a few minutes. But, um, what I wanted to, to bring about that, I wanted to mention about that is several years ago, um, we, we updated our processes, we updated our standards, and we were seeing some fairly large grain compliance concerns. Assessment system is not comprehensive. The, the governance structure doesn't allow for a quality program. And now the issues that we're seeing are very fine-grained. Now we're getting very specific issues. Um, uh, for instance, we used to see the, the assessment system wasn't comprehensive and clear, and now we're going to bring a program to you today that has a good, has a good assessment system, but they weren't informing their candidates as well as they should. So the system structures are there, now we're getting into the, the specific issues. So I think we're moving in the right direction and, and, and our programs moving up. The other thing I want, and I won't go through all of these, but I want to draw your attention to the innovations page. If you don't read anything else, read that, because partnerships, you know, when you did your board reports, you know, we heard about partnerships. There are partnerships going on all over the place now with P-12 schools, with community colleges, easing access, trying to get students through programs when they come out with a, come out of high school with a associate's degree and things like that. You know, working with new technology, working with the schools, with the technology in their schools, et cetera. So, um, I wanted to point that out as something that we're, we're pretty pleased to see, the innovations, especially around partnerships. Um, and we're here to answer any questions about this report. Please.
It's interesting to kind of see the disparities between like the novice administrators and their super, their supervisors and what their perceptions are of how well they're doing. Do you think that's because in their training, they've been more prepared to see how they could improve in those areas, or do you think that it's simply just a matter of like their perception? Like, why do you think that's?
Right. And we've, we've been looking at that for a number of years, and I, you know, and we've talked to some, some principals about their perceptions of the teachers and the superintendents, their perceptions of the principals. Um, and I think it's just principals, or the, the new teachers, new principals are so new at this, they don't know if they're good or bad. They know they're doing the best they can, but they don't know, they don't have any way to gauge the quality of that work, whereas their supervisor does. So, you know, they've seen more of it. So we tend to think, it, it illustrates to us that it's, it's more of my perception of my, of my work, and I'm lowering my perception compared to what my supervisor is doing.
Uh, I, I mentioned this earlier, I think, of the, uh, the difference in terms of educator prep completers is just startling to me to see where we were in eighteen nineteen, and then, I mean, it's hard to get your arms around that and how that impacts us. Professor, some stats too, about how many of these are leaving the state?
We, we have some stats on, on how many students leave the state and how many students come into state. So it's about two hundred and fifty or so each year. It's a wash. So we bring in about as many that are, you know, they went to school in Texas and came home versus they came to school in Iowa and, and went home. So about two hundred and fifty or so every year.
That's kind of weird.
Um, one thing interesting, I was in a meeting this morning with some of our regional states, uh, there's a couple of states that are trying to find ways to survey, and I haven't even talked to, to Anne about this, but find, trying to find ways to survey, um, administrators as to why their teachers have left. And so, because we're, we're trying in our task force to figure out a way, why are people not becoming teachers? Why are they leaving? But there's some states that have some innovative ways to, to do that that we're going to try to steal from, um, and see if we can do that as part of our task force work.
Could you tell me about your, the male, female breakdown as well?
Male, female breakdown for, for educators is absolutely a, a national trend, is about seventy, teacher, the teaching workforce is about seventy-five percent female. Um, the, the, the highest male percentage we saw was probably four or five years ago, but at the time, it was probably seventy-two percent female. Now it's seventy-five percent female, so we've been becoming more feminine in that regard.
What about demographics? Ethnicity?
The, the, when we compare, yes, um, the, and, and this is something that, that I wasn't able to get good data on because we maintain it in a federal website that's been down for three months. It was supposed to be a, a month and a half ago. I just checked this morning and it's still down. But that's where we have our data on people who are entering programs. And, um, at any rate, and demographic data. So currently, um, students in Iowa, you know, it's twenty-eight percent are students of color. Ed prep institution students, people being prepared to be teachers, are about twelve, thirteen percent students of color. Um, and our teachers in Iowa are about three percent teachers of color. So there's movement in that direction, but it's just, it's, it's very, very low. One, again, the task force, what we're, the focus of the task force that's operating right now is to diversify the teaching force. How can we find ways to bring in students of color, people of underrepresented populations to become teachers? And, and we've been working pretty hard on that.
Are you aware of any, um, you know, specific scholarship programs around the state that serve and entice students of color?
There are scholarship programs around the state and nationally, um, that focus on bringing teachers into content shortage areas, but I don't know of any that, we, we'd like to see some that would do either bring in students of color, um, teachers of color, and also bring people into rural isolated areas where it's harder to get teachers. But neither one of those exists.
Years ago, I, this is a lot of years ago. You and I had a special program with Marshalltown that they were providing some scholarships for Hispanics, specifically Hispanic students to go into teacher prep. And I, you know, that lasted, I don't know how it lasted a few years, and then, um, I think it ended, and I don't know why, but.
It, it did.
At the time, I mean, it definitely got some people into the pipeline.
It did. And they, they also ran one with, uh, a, a similar type of a program with, um, Waterloo Schools. But again, it's, funding is hard to get for, for an institution. So we're seeing Simpson is, is targeting Hispanic students, Indianola area and around there. University of Iowa is, is targeting students of color through a partnership they're doing. University of Dubuque is, um, targeting, um, paraeducators from underrepresented populations. So, uh, we, we're seeing a lot more of our, our colleges and universities are, are targeting these populations, but they're doing it with limited funds. So, you know, if we can talk to people to, to try to get funding that way, that'd be great.
Larry?
Sure.
On page eight, where you list the number of full-time teachers, um, so from twenty eighteen nineteen to twenty nineteen twenty, it actually increased. So this talk about teacher shortages, is that something that's very recent and this data just doesn't take it into consideration?
Teacher, we've always had a, a shortage of teachers. Um, at, at the same time that you see the teachers are staying, you know, the similar or are growing a little bit, you see the number of students growing quite a bit. So the, the number of students are growing faster than the number of teachers. But the, the significant shortage that we're seeing now is, um, probably really strong within the last three years. It started just before COVID hit, um, and I, I understand this doesn't necessarily show that, but, um, the, the way what we look at, the way we look at it, and I've got some numbers if, if you like, the way we look at it are job postings. So we look at job postings. When you're talking about shortages a little bit ago, we examine how many jobs are posted on August twenty-eighth, um, you know, beginning of school. And there were more jobs posted, there were three hundred and fifty teacher jobs posted on August twenty-eighth, open positions. Usually we have forty or fifty. So, um, there are four hundred and eleven coaching positions open that day. Uh, so there are a lot of positions open this year. There were a number of positions open last year, and there were not that many positions open on August twenty-eighth the year before.
A couple of things, with the number of full-time teachers in Iowa, that increase is partially, part of, I'm guessing, is partially triggered by the teacher quality program where districts were hiring existing teachers for leadership roles and then turning around and hiring people to.
And that, that could, I don't know, I don't know that, but that could very well be.
I'm referring that that could be part of that.
You bet.
The other thing I had is with the, the table of, of, uh, teachers prepared stopped at nineteen twenty. Are you guessing that, is that number going to be, when it reports out in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, is that number going to be pretty static, or do you have any?
That's, that's a really good question. Anecdotally, um, a lot of our colleges and universities are, are, um, talking about larger student, larger student numbers coming in. So they're bringing more students in. Now, it takes three or four years to get through a, a teacher prep program. So I would, I would think it probably would drop again, but I think that, that we're, we, I hope we're going to see this coming up because we are seeing programs are talking about bringing in more students.
I thought that, it's kind of ironic that with teachers, their field experience, there's no financial incentive for that, where you go to a business-related internship, be receiving funds. And this may be another potential carrot that may have some impact, maybe not, but.
I can guarantee you the task force was talking about that. Sir, absolutely.
Does teacher salary, because I, I feel like a couple of years ago, um, we were ranked not very high in the nation for teacher salary. Has that been increased, or is that like a district, um, I mean?
So comparing state by state, we're, you know, about two-thirds the way down on teacher salaries state by state, which is hard to compare because cost of living, et cetera, et cetera. It's cheaper to live in Des Moines than it is to live in Santa Clara, California. But when, what, we have a, we have some data, uh, we look at Iowa College Student Aid Commission does studies every year of graduates with a bachelor's degree and what their salary is. So when they looked at eighteen nineteen graduates, um, over the next year, um, the average graduate with a bachelor's degree made forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars a year. Um, the average beginning teacher's salary was forty-two-five. So already teachers are, are seven grand behind. Um, our minimum salary in the state of Iowa, which came out of TLC in twenty thirteen, is thirty-three-five. We still have about ten districts that are paying thirty-three-five. We have about twenty districts that still pay below thirty-five thousand dollars for a beginning teacher. But we're not the lowest.
That's scary.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's.
Not the lowest.
But all of these things, all the things we've been saying all day are all coming up in this conversation and are being considered in terms of what are the solutions that need to be put in place to make a change. So you haven't shared anything new that hasn't come up, but I think it'll be interesting to see where that group sort of lands in terms of what we think we really need to recommend to really make a change.
And I don't know if you guys can speak to this yet, but like what is within like your, I don't know if jurisdiction is the right word, but within your ability as a state department of ed to address these issues? Like, what, what can you do?
It depends on what the, the fix is.
Yeah.
You know, is it something that's legislative? Is it something that's just actions that we can do? So it will kind of be a blended model. So depending on what, what they recommend and what we find, I think it'll be a multiple part approach.
Okay.
So if you go specifically to, you know, even the, the TLC recommended salary, that isn't something that's independently we could do, but we could follow up on. You know, there's this whole progression, changes to any requirements for licensure or teaching or pathways. It crosses over in DE authority to state law, to federal law, and so it's figuring out what's the path we want and where each of the pieces along the way to make that change. That's why when I talked earlier about it's not necessarily just a DE initiative, this is kind of across-the-board framework of change.
How much is the, your group talking about, um, I don't, be, social emotional well-being of students now in our schools? And the reason I ask that is I, I have two relatives that are in teaching, one who's nearing retirement and she can't wait because she said she, she has never experienced the behavior problems in twenty-some years of teaching that she is this year. And she said there are new teachers who are saying, I'm not coming back, this is not for me, this is not what I signed on for. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a whole societal issue, I understand that, but what can we do? I mean, and is your group talking about addressing that in some way?
I, I can tell you that the task force, that's not really our function. You know, our function is retaining, um, and recruiting and retaining, primarily recruiting students of color or teachers of color. So that's not our focus. But the best conference that was two weeks ago, um, was a great opportunity, it was well-received, there was over sixteen hundred educators in the state that came to that. It was a great opportunity for teachers to come in and learn about socio-emotional health, mental health, um, not only working within their school, but their own. So I think more opportunities like that, I think are going to be very, very strong.
You know, they can learn about it, but if they're, if they're, you know, filling in for this teacher who's gone because of COVID and they're not having any prep time themselves and they're stretched like this already, they know about the social emotional issues, but the resources to deal with it and the support from, from administration. I mean, I think there's a whole, and maybe your, your conference talked about that, but it's, it's a whole myriad of, of issues that are intertwined there that simply staff development on understanding it is not enough. There simply aren't the resources to help teachers deal with it.
And that actually was part of the focus of, and that's part of the focus of the center, isn't just the training. It's how can we also, what's the word I want to, what's the word I'm using? Put resources out there in particularly rural areas that don't necessarily have, have the access, can't think of the word, but yes, all of that is part of what that progression is intended to do for all those same reasons. Yeah.
What about for the, because I think in the beginning, we were talking about the teachers scored themselves lower, um, in terms of dealing with maybe their own mental health and, and how they saw, I guess, their mental health, and they just kind of thought that everything was kind of falling apart, um, in terms of them dealing with their own mental health and then their students' mental health. in terms of them dealing with their own mental health and then their students' mental health. I think understandably, I mean, I think during COVID, a lot of people felt that way. But I feel like, you know, people aren't meant to deal with high-stress situations for a prolonged period of time. That causes anxiety. It causes depression. And so the thing is, is that they've been under these high-stress situations for now a year and a half, going into two years now, and who knows when this is going to end? So I think that if they're saying that they're in the 40s and 50s, it's great that their administrators or principals thought that they were doing a better job. That still doesn't negate the fact that they feel like they're drowning. So I guess I can understand why people wouldn't want to come back if they feel like they're drowning. Or I can see why people would want to retire if they feel like they're drowning. So I guess how in the short term do we help them not feel like they're drowning?
You know, as far as that prep, I can tell you that, that, you know, we, we make sure that all our programs have this information so they can go to, so they can look at their curriculum, they can look at their supports and build those based on what their graduates are telling them. I will say that these graduates that are interviewed here or were surveyed here are perfect storm because they graduated in 2020, which meant they didn't have all of the preparation that they were supposed to have. And then they taught in 2021 in their first year, you know, which is still an incredible pandemic impact. So while it's not surprising, it's also important. And so, you know, what I can tell you is we're bringing that to the program so they can adjust their preparation to do something about that, at least from the preparation standpoint. We don't have any control over a P-12.
I also think for my, like, what I've seen my teachers doing is, like, one of my teachers never has, like, had to use a sick day and like, he talks about that. He's never had to use a sick day, but he's using his sick days this year to take time off of work so that he can get caught up with his work.
Yeah.
The teacher that I was on a Zoom call last night with developing their leadership programs, like, yeah, I'm not heading into work tomorrow. I'm taking us, I'm taking one of my personal days and using the time that you're supposed to use for personal days so that I can get caught up with my work and I'm having meetings throughout the day. And so I think that, like, even though there's like a staff shortage where, like, my principal's filling in for some of our teachers as substitutes, like, they feel like they cannot take those days, but they still need, need some of those. I know that that's not like a remedy because even if you take those days, there's going to be more work piling on. So you can't really just like take a break because then you're going to get behind in one aspect when you're getting caught up in another aspect. But I think that that is one thing as well, that teachers are doing this that I haven't seen before.
Interesting.
On the plus side of this, we're getting kids into the classroom earlier, college classes, earlier and earlier so that they do get that. Really eye-opening view of what's happening in the school district. So you shouldn't be surprised when you have your own classroom. We'll show you right now what it's like in that classroom. So again, even with our freshmen, sophomores, we're getting in the class, high school or middle school or elementary classrooms, so they got a good look at what they're going to get.
Yeah.
I think that's the, that's a good thing.
Maybe.
They might say, this is not for me at that point. Walk out the door. Yeah, right? Exactly.
No, I, you're right. You're right. You're right.
Maybe we need teacher MTSs, I think.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. Are there any more questions or comments?
Put it on the website and now we're next again. Mount Mercy, they come in, right?
Yes, sir.
They got a program for drag minority kids.
David, can you get Jennifer Rasmussen on with us?
She's in. Hello, Jennifer.
Hello.
Hello, Jennifer.
Hi, Larry.
So I'm going to talk to you about Mount Mercy University. We did a review of their program. Dr. Jennifer Rasmussen is the chair of the department at Mount Mercy. Mount Mercy is a private institution that offers early childhood, elementary education, several secondary ed majors, art and music education at the undergrad and the grad level. Their, I think their biggest strengths is their professional development school. Professional development school is where they'll take their faculty and their students into a P-12 school. The faculty teach classes there. The students practice with real elementary or middle school or high school students there. And the faculty are there to give them feedback. So it's just a great opportunity for the candidates to learn teaching better. And it also helps those schools that they partner with because they have all these other adults in the classrooms. As far as issues go, the, there was one issue in the governance standard. And what we do in this, if you're new to this, there are six standards that need to be met. Four of them are overarching standards regardless of what the program of study is, you need to meet them. Governance, diversity, faculty, and assessment. And then we have a clinical and a knowledge, skills, and disposition standard for teacher prep versus admin prep versus other specialists. So with Mount Mercy, they met those six programs around, those six standards around, around teachers. So in governance, they lost a faculty member. They had an early childhood program. They have to have somebody that oversees that. They have to have somebody with expertise to manage a program. They lost that person. They had a really strong faculty member that they lost. And they were only able to hire somebody as a half-time person. Now that person's dedicated to this mission and does the oversight. But they hired somebody at halftime. The, the administration has told them that if, if this program grows, we'll make that full-time. If the program stays where it is, we'll keep that at halftime. Either way, they meet the standard because they have somebody that's qualified to oversee the program. There was a concern in faculty around the 40-hour piece that we were going to take out, but actually Jennifer wanted us to leave that in. The requirement is that all faculty members need to complete 40 hours of team teaching, of being in a classroom, a P-12 classroom over the past five years. Every program that we looked at over the last year had a problem with that because they couldn't get into schools because of COVID. They just weren't able to get in. So we still wrote it as an issue, but they were able to resolve it once they were able to get into schools. And so with, with Mount Mercy, they had one person that had done 40 hours, but the program thought they could do things better, so we kept that as an issue. So they could help, that would help them to bring that person into a more quality 40 hours. No compliance concerns in diversity, no compliance concerns in assessment or in clinical. So it's really strong program in those regards. In the knowledge, skills, and dispositions area, we also call that curriculum area. There were basically, there were two areas that were, there wasn't clarity. Elementary teachers need, are required to take nine credits in math, in science, in social studies, and language arts. And there's certain courses they can choose from. And it just wasn't clear that they were to get what they needed with the courses they were allowed to choose from. So the program had to tighten that up a little bit. And then we asked them to increase the way that they teach, teachers to use technology in, in teaching and learning. It wasn't really up to where it needed to be. So those were those compliance concerns. But I want to again point out that these compliance concerns were very specific. Overarching, they had a very good program. We just had some specific concerns. The other thing I should tell you is all of those concerns have been resolved. We wouldn't have brought you a recommendation for full approval if they haven't. So everything's been resolved. We recommend that, that you buy them, award them full approval. You know, we'll, I'll be happy to answer any process questions and Jennifer certainly can answer questions about our program.
Does anyone have any questions?
Jennifer, I mentioned your, mentioned your school just a moment ago in terms of what you're doing for outreach for minority students, bring them in and, yeah, turn them into good teachers. Could you tell us about that?
We have several different initiatives. Some of them are centralized around our professional development schools where we are in our more diverse school settings. So we are seeing them from early on. I had a conversation with a fifth-grade student today who wants to be a teacher. She happens to be a very promising African-American young lady, and I look forward to working with her. And we're looking to find ways to connect with mentors early. So just being present in the schools is important. We also have partnerships in place where we are looking to develop a pipeline program where we are supporting our high school students of color who would like to proceed through our program. And we have some pretty rigorous scholarship programs through campus that we would like to be able to supplement with other scholarship programs, of course. But that has really been the sticking point. It's been financial and students who are really trying not to take on debt while going into a field which they realize is really important, but financially wanting to be stable at the other end. So we are continuing to work with those partnerships and that really is the key, that communication.
Is there a connection with the community college in that respect? Certainly getting kids started there as opposed to going to a four-year college. Isn't, I mean, isn't that part of maybe one, one, one way we could go?
Yes, and we have had communication with our community college. Kirkwood has been a great partner with us for a number of years in bringing in transfer students. There are rare cases where it's actually more financially feasible for students to start at a four-year university depending on the scholarship program. So we're looking at how all of those nuances fit together. And it's less straightforward than it may seem at first glance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
How many, how many graduates did you have last year of your teacher prep program?
Last year, I'm not the numbers person, just for the sake of clarity. We graduated, I want to see, it was approximately 20 last year, which was a small graduating class. The caveat to that is we actually had quite a few students opt to stay an additional semester to have additional field experiences. So they were able to enter student teaching in a way that they felt much more comfortable about. So we actually have them still in our program, so they will be completers under the next calendar year.
Actually, no one of your graduates last year is teaching Grinnell now.
Oh, yes. One of our very promising graduates.
Yeah, he's a great kid.
All right. Any more questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
I move we award full approval to the Mount Mercy University Education Prep Program for the next review.
Second.
All right, it's moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jennifer.
David, could you get Mark Stupka on Zoom for us? I keep looking back there.
He is on, sir.
Thank you very much. Yeah, really. Watch this guy looking.
I never know which one to look at.
They're different.
Yeah. That one looks like it's his review or, okay, never mind. I guess we're over here now.
Hi. There he is. There he is. So, yeah, he is. He's, he's visiting a student teacher in, I think, New York. So Mark is the, Dr. Mark Stupka is the chair of the teacher prep program at Faith Baptist Bible College just up the road in Ankeny. And they have elementary ed, secondary ed, and music ed. The program has strong faculty and it's a well-organized unit. It's fairly small. There's only, you know, basically four full-time faculty, but they're strong and they have a very strong support within their community. There were no compliance concerns in the first two standards, in governance and resources and the diversity standard. There were two issues in the, in the faculty standard. One was, again, the 40 hours because they couldn't get people into classrooms for COVID. That's been resolved. But they also had a faculty member that, according to the standards, wasn't the best person qualified to teach a couple of the courses that she was teaching. She was teaching specific courses in literacy and specific courses in meeting the needs of diverse learners. And we called that into question. So they've put her to teach different courses, which she's doing just fine. And they've hired someone else with qualifications to do those courses. So the faculty issues have been resolved. I, I mentioned earlier that, you know, we used to see larger issues. We would bring to you a program, their assessment system isn't coherent. It doesn't meet anything. They have a good, strong assessment system, but they just weren't doing a great job of informing their students about their progress. It was a pretty easy lift to get that resolution. And the clinical standard, one of the things that they allow candidates to do when candidates who are for that first, that first field experience, it's built into our standards that candidates must get at least 10 hours of a field experience before they're admitted to the program. So they can see what it's like and say, yeah, this is great or, okay, I'm done. And they'll allow students to do that when they're on a winter break back home. But they needed some better oversight of that to make sure that the quality was there. They're not in mom or dad's classroom or something like that. And then finally, the knowledge, skills, and dispositions, there were a couple of syllabi that they weren't clear. Candidates couldn't articulate from the syllabus what it was that they were supposed to be learning according to the standards. So I think before, within a week or so after we had been there, they had resolved that issue and, and redone those syllabes. So again, Faith has a very good program. They just had some of these specific issues that they needed to resolve. And again, we're going to recommend that you provide, that you award them full approval. And again, we're available for questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
May I ask you again, how many students that typically graduate?
We usually, we usually have between 10 and 20 graduates from our teacher ed program each year. Last year, we had a smaller group of seven. This year, we're expecting pretty close to 20. Excuse me for not being in a more professional background here. I was a student teacher in Pennsylvania yesterday and we're traveling up to Albany, New York today to a teacher's conference starting tomorrow. And so I'm in Binghamton, New York right now, sitting outside of Starbucks.
It's about 40. I was like, it looks like he's in a parking lot.
Graduates typically teach in a public school? Do your, do your graduates typically teach in a public school setting or a private school setting?
I, I don't have the exact statistics, but I would say approximately 75% of our students go into a Christian school, private school settings. Probably 25% or less end up in a public school setting.
And they all are dual majors. So they have a major in Bible studies as well as a major in elementary education or English Language Arts Secondary Education, et cetera. So they, they have a lot of credits.
I would move that we approve Faith Baptist Bible College educator program until the year 27, 28.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Safe travels.
Enjoy your coffee.
Thank you.
David, could you bring Patty Struikle in on Zoom? She in? Okay. So my colleague, Maryam Ronzabo, is, is finally going to talk and she's going to bring to you Waldorf. She headed up the Waldorf review and so she's going to present that one to you.
Thanks for your time. I have Dr. Becky Hill here and Dr. Struikle in Zoom. So Waldorf offers elementary education and they also offer K-12 physical ed and music education. One strength that I like to mention that we observed when we were doing the site visit, almost all of their elementary education majors are receiving a reading endorsement, which is great for future when the teachers go into the classroom, they're prepared to teach the literacy. The program has a strong institutional support and they have very strong faculty members who are working collaboratively. There were several compliance concerns. Like Larry mentioned, those compliance concerns were not something very Like Larry mentioned, those compliance concerns were not something very overarching, but there were some smaller compliance concern that the program was able to address right away. The concern that was in the governance was around the physical education. Most of the courses in the physical education was taught by the adjunct faculty members and it didn't have an oversight by a full-time faculty member. The program hired a director for the physical education part-time to oversee that program and the faculty and the curriculum for that program. So that was resolved. There was no compliance concerns in the diversity or assessment. In fact, they have a very good assessment system. There were several recommendations there for them which they addressed, but they have a very good assessment system. Initially, there was a compliance concern around the faculty meeting the 40 hours in the process and being recent for two faculty member, which was related to COVID. One of the faculty member was able to meet all the 40 hours. So that was resolved for the faculty member who was newer and had more hours to meet. They put a plan in place so that the faculty member would finish the 40 hours by the end of this fall. They also wrote a policy which was agreed by all the faculty members to make sure that they are meeting that 40 hours throughout the years before the next visit. There were two compliance concern in the clinical standard. One was related to several students, not all, but several students were placed in classes where it was not related to their major or the area of concentration in the course that they were placed in. The program addressed that through the policy and clear instruction and they provided us how they are going to ensure that is not going to happen. And there is a good communication between the faculty members and the placement coordinator so that it is, it is overseen better. There was also another lack of compliance. The, the standards require that the programs offer at a minimum of a workshop equivalent to a day for the cooperating teachers. The evidence didn't support that the workshop was equivalent to one day. So the program put in place a plan that the workshop would be certain, part of it would be face-to-face and there will be also accessible material that will be communicated with the cooperating teachers throughout the semester so that the cooperating teachers are very clear on the expectations on the what to expect from the students. The knowledge, skills, and disposition standard was met when you were onsite. There was, it was not matching exactly the curriculum exhibit that was submitted to the, to the BOEE. So the program reviewed the courses and made sure that they were submitting the the updated curriculum exhibit and it was approved by the BOEE in June. So we believe that the program is in compliance with the standards and the ones that they were in, they came into the compliance very easily. And we recommend that the board fully approve the program until the next review. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Talk to me just a little bit about the diversity standard and how you deal with that issue. You're not exactly in an area where there'd be a lot of adversity in, at Forest City.
Right. And then kind of reflecting our difficulty sometimes in getting our clinical placements in the right places because small towns, small schools around us. Diversity-wise, we get a lot of recruits, a lot for athletics from all over the country. So for our small campus, we really do have a lot of diversity on campus. Trick is try, try and taste them into education versus business where you get paid better when you get out. And so, and we've also had a little trouble retaining the ones that do just because they want to be a coach and trying to tell them, do you want to really be a PE teacher and coach? Or do you want to be a coach? And tried to separate that. I mean, so, so some of them come in without realistic expectations. So that's kind of a trick a little bit, but I think we're, you're doing better with that. I think some things that have happened in state were really great when they took out that Praxis One test because that was knocking our kids out, those diverse kids. They just didn't have same background. So I think this has been, that was a really good move. And so we're trying to do more things to support those students and coming up with more plans of how to do that.
Do you have any idea how many of your athletes actually graduate and have a bachelor degree?
You know, I'd say the ones, the ones who stick with it, of course, but it's, we also get students who with athletics, you get them that come, they're there for your, and I didn't get to play enough. So therefore I'll go find another college where I can play more. And so that's a tricky thing. It really is. But you know, I, I think overall, we have pretty good retention of those students, the ones who are happy with their coaches. You know, so that is a complicated factor.
Another factor.
Go ahead, Patty.
Yeah, I'll add another piece on diversity. When we have students who come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, the out-of-pocket costs sometimes catch them off guard. As you mentioned, where we're located means that sometimes your clinical placement is going to be 15 miles away. So if you are in the Intro to Teaching course and your first placement is in Lake Mills or Northwood, all of the sudden there are 20 hours that you are going to travel in order to meet. And so sometimes those out-of-pocket costs associated with things like clinical experiences will hurt our students who come in with, without the expectation that they're going to be added costs.
I know somebody everywhere. I know your softball coach. I know somebody everywhere. Wonderful young lady.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I would move that we grant full approval to the Waldorf University Education Preparation Program through 20, 27, 28 academic year.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And I would like to thank the state board for your time and effort for all the tough issues that you guys deal with all the time. And I got special like this thing for DE people because they, they do keep all of our feet to the fire. But they also are very supportive and help us fix things and recommendations for a thing better. So things are going great. And not to mention, I really like Ann. Tell Larry aye.
All right, so, hey, Jeremy.
I believe I'm next.
Jeremy, this is David. I'm having trouble getting Dan and Vladimir in the room. They're, they're in attendee, but it's not to let me get them into panelists. Just wanted to give you a heads up. I'm still working on it.
Sure, no worries. I, I do need to share my screen so that folks can see the PowerPoint. All right, bear with me one second.
You, you should be able to do so.
Okay.
These, these were literally still being hung, I think, yesterday. So just, they didn't really have much of a chance to practice.
Okay. There we go. Thank you for having me today to talk about Iowa's community colleges' fall enrollment. State Board of Education is responsible for many things, including being the state board for Iowa's largest system of higher education. So this is the fall enrollment report. So this is our freshest data, but it's not the most complete data, right? So this is, we'll be coming back to you in January with our fiscal year data from the prior academic year 2021. It'll be very comprehensive. It'll talk about student success. Are all things our community colleges do. This is data from this fall. So, and it's just credit student enrollment. So all the non-credit job training, other things community colleges do won't be captured in here, but it'll give you a picture of what's going on with their fall credit enrollment. So let's jump into the highlights. Our enrollment at our 15 community colleges this fall is down about 1.6% from the prior year, bringing us to about 82,000 students. While that enrollment is down, nationally, fall enrollment at our community colleges is down 5.6% and fell even more sharply in the prior year. So nationally, their community colleges are facing stiff headwinds in enrollment. In terms of the total enrollment, while we're down 1.6%, that total obfuscates institutional trends. If you look at the individual college data, nine of the 15 community colleges actually saw gains this fall. A lot of what's going on there are institutions sort of adjusting to disruption from the pandemic last fall. So the colleges, some, some of the colleges saw the biggest dips last fall are seeing some gains as, as things sort of even out a bit this fall. Institutions are kind of falling back into the pre-pandemic trends. There are a variety of factors that are driving the downward trend. The most important of which, of course, is the economy. I always say when I'm talking about enrollment at our community colleges, community college enrollment is, is in a substantial part countercyclical, meaning when the economy is very tight, our students are folks are looking to get into the workforce and during recessionary periods, we have more students coming back looking to get retraining. So as you know, everybody wants talent right now. Everybody wants labor. And so it's not surprising that we're going to see some enrollment issues there. Now, I would say that we do expect that to be somewhat transitory, but enrollment can lag changes in the economy by as much as 18 months. So, so it will, it'll probably be a bit before we see changes. There are a variety of other factors that are likely involved, pandemic-related disruptions, demographic changes. We talked about rural-to-urban migration at the institution level, birth rates from 18 years ago, these kind of things. One thing I would note is that we watch the FAFSA completion rates as a predictor for future post-secondary matriculation. So students applying for financial aid when they're still in high school. Those trends have been generally downward, which is a bit worrisome. And so we're watching that and sort of this, this question about student, how students and families think about the value of college. As you know, our future Eddie Iowa goal is one around post-secondary credential attainment. Our economy in order to maintain productivity, to meet growing demand, our economy is becoming increasingly automated. The skill levels that employers need are growing and we need post-secondary award production. To do that, we need more students coming into our institution. So it is something we're tracking closely.
Jeremy, these numbers include joint enrollment?
They do, and I will talk about those here in this presentation. Yeah. So in looking at the student demographics, we were surprised to see male students increase slightly because the national trend there is actually for male students to be falling off. Instead, we saw female students slip about 3%. So since about 1980, the last 40 years, we had this roughly nationally 60-40 split, more females than males in higher education. But we were surprised, surprised to see male students increasing a bit this fall. We're also pleased to see the enrollment of minoritized students increase 0.7%. There's a lot of concern nationally about equity issues here. The decline was 4.1% nationally, minoritized students. So we did see some growth there. Students with a racial or ethnic minority background now account for one in four of our community college students, which is a record high. Of concern though in the data, we did see that students that are economically disadvantaged, the number of those slipped a bit this fall. When we break that down a bit further, looking at the demographics, the largest change we saw was related to Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. Don't read too much into that. That's small n-sizes. We don't have a huge number of Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. So that's swinging because of, you know, again, the small number of students. The largest declines we saw were among white and Asian students, which fell 3.3% and 5.3% respectively. Black and Hispanic students saw smaller declines at 1.9 and 2.5% respectively. These trends are sort of the inverse of the national trends. Nationally, the enrollment of black students fell more considerably than Asian and white students. So so we have, yeah, a different dynamic here, here in Iowa. Looking at student age, the median age was disrupted a bit last year with the pandemic. It dropped a bit, but that's starting to return back to the normal. We've had it at 21 for a number of years. Looking at the various age bands, you can see we had growth in students under 17. We'll talk about the joint enrollment. That's a, a large driver of that, of our decreases. The most notable were students over age 25, which again, can be partly attributed to the tight labor market. Our enrollment declines were less than what we saw of community colleges nationally and all of the age bands with the exception of students over 40, where in Iowa, we saw that slip more than 5%, which is quite a bit more than we saw nationally at 1.2%. Switching gears a little bit to our offerings. Online, it looks like there's these huge drops and I would tell you what's going on there is that during the pandemic, those numbers soared and those are correcting and going back to closer to normal levels. So for students, online delivery remains substantial. It's something a lot of our students do, but place still matters in delivery. So we're starting to see those numbers come back to levels that we've seen before. And in terms of joint enrollment, Iowa's a national leader, of course, in providing college credit opportunities to high school students, something we're very proud of and I love to talk to you all about. Joint enrollment was up this fall 3.4% and that departs from the national trend where it's, it's down slightly. I can tell you enrollment of high school students now accounts for 43.6% of our community college headcount. So it is a, it is a big portion and about 27% of credit hours when you're thinking of FTEE. About 27% of credit hours. So the enrollment's growing, the intensity is also growing. So students are taking more, more courses as well. That doesn't mean that they're taking heavy course loads. We do have a handful of kids that are very advanced and they're taking very heavy course loads, but that is not the norm. Instead, we're seeing more students take, for example, three courses prior to graduation instead of two. That kind of thing.
I mean, do you have any, just in general, over the last 10 or 15 years, 43.6% of enrollment seems pretty darn high. What was it, 10, 15 years ago?
That's a great question. I can get you the number. Quite a bit less. I would say it's grown considerably over the last really 15, 20 years. I've been here 15 years working on this stuff. And yeah, our numbers used to be in the 15, 20% range and we have institutions over 50% now. So it is quite a market change and we've become increasingly integrated as a system of K-14, which is great because every state we talk to is trying to figure out how to get more college credit opportunities to their high school students. And we have taken this median student approach that is really provided a great deal of access to our students in Iowa. So we're really, really proud of them.
Do you have numbers on how many students within the DNFAS school district are taking taking college classes? Because I don't know, in my conversations with Ben, it seems like it's a lot less common to take like Dnet classes than it is at my school and the, like, schools like Johnstown.
Absolutely. So I can get you the Des Moines Public School data in particular. It's available. The fiscal year data is available on our website. I don't know if we break out the fall data, but we can get you some data. We do continue to have variation in student participation based on geography, right? So we come and talk about the joint enrollment report every year in March. One of the things we do is throw up the map and you'll see some areas where students have great access to these. The school you go to could be one of them and some where students have very little. And so we often hear people say, do all students have access now because you're so high? The, the problem is no. Access isn't even, I can't speak to Des Moines Public School. We'll have to pull the data on it, but, but I can tell you that access is, it remains uneven.
So are most of your instructors, high school instructors who, who are qualified to teach or is there a?
There's a really healthy mix. So there's often perceptions based on people coming from a local vantage point that it's all college instructors or it's all high school, employed instructors, all of them acting as college adjuncts. To be clear, they're all meeting college requirements. But there is a really healthy mix of instruction. Yeah, it used to be around 50-50. I couldn't tell you what it is right now, but I can check on it and get, let you know.
Why, why is there disparity in access across the state?
Yeah, there are a variety of factors that contribute to those geographic access issues. They can be, they range from issues of location of the school, you know, somewhere near a college campus and that helps, right? Transportation issues remain significant. It can relate to the availability of qualified instructors either on the college campus or in those school districts, the qualified faculty. It can relate to availability of a regional center. For example, we've built those out in some areas. They don't exist in some others. It can relate to local leadership. We've seen now new interest in west, in some parts of the western part of the state where we haven't had as high rates in the past where they're now, you know, getting really excited about regionalization, for example, in terms of being able to provide these. So there's, there are a lot of factors that play into it. There's, there's no simple answer, but but those are, those are some of the major contributors.
How would parents like find out about it? Would it be, or how would students find out about it or how to enroll?
Yeah, so it's hard to students' individual career and academic planning. So students do an eighth grade plan. They figure out what courses they're going to be taking, what they might want to do in life. And through that process, they, they learn about these. what they might want to do in life, and through that process, they learn about these opportunities. Our colleges also work closely with school counselors to ensure that they know about what concurrent enrollment offerings exist. And 99% of the offerings of the joint enrollment we saw in the fall enrollment report are offered through contractual agreements between districts and colleges. So there are district offerings and college offerings, so those schools are making those opportunities available through those agreements with the college, so they're good, solid partnerships.
Within my own school, there's opportunities to take classes with teachers who are certified. So like, if I take my calculus class, I'll get dual enrollment credit for D-MAT. But also, I have the option to take online D-MAT classes. So our school really pushes hard for that, more so than they push for AP classes. And so I know like in DNPS, there's the option, a lot of students go to central campus and that's where they take their advanced courses if they choose to take them. And so for me, it's word of mouth, that's why I found out about D-MAT classes. I struggled to figure out what if I wanted to take AP or D-MAT ones at, like their community college is what D-MAT is. And then, so for me, it was word of mouth and then our school really pushes it hard too once you get into the higher grades. But I think that there's like, you need to have planning and support from other teachers to get it to the point where you have, like you have your high school requirements out of the way and you can take those classes too, which I don't know if every school offers to the level that my school does.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're making a big assumption here when we think that, you know, they're being coached and counseled in a way that, you know, equally and have access.
At eighth grade level, right? We say counseling takes place, planning, and then sophomore year too, is that how we do that?
Yeah, the individualized current academic planning is supposed to follow the student through high school. So there should be at least an annual kind of process there. Now, there are a lot of other sort of efforts underway among the colleges and one partnership that we support is the College Career Transition Counselors, where our, you know, we have a college transition counselor that is hired by the college and sort of works with two or three high schools embedded in there a couple days of the week to help support the existing counseling staff in terms of things like the FAFSA and what students really need, you know, help them make that jump, particularly students who might not go to college otherwise. And so there are a lot of, a lot of efforts underway to help students make that, make that transition.
Well, and then going back to the counselor piece, and this is another area we're going to address separately from this. A lot of schools, particularly rural schools, you have one counselor, but that counselor has three really, really important roles. One, the scheduling of the student and that path. Two is this career opportunities or community college opportunities or advanced coursework or the work-based learning we're talking about. And the other one is the mental health support. One person is doing all of those and that's not sustainable. So we're looking at, so what Jeremy just mentioned is one of the opportunities that is available that we're exploring on different ways to expand, how to fulfill these three really important roles with such limited resources in most places.
Great. Switching gears a little bit to the programs. So thinking about our students who are not in high school that are on our campuses or online. We, I want to draw your attention to transfer majors. This is an area where department leadership has been very important, helping to build structured and better-supported pathways for students. Think, instead of an à la carte AA, students are, you know, enrolling in a clear, transfer-oriented program that's structured with structured advising and a clear path to a four-year university. Well, we've been talking about this with the board for, I don't know, maybe five years. We actually have students in there now, so I can talk about the data. We have 3,600 students, or 3,800 students enrolled in transfer majors this fall. The largest one so far, business, psychology, and criminal justice. We, of course, have a lot of students enrolled in career and technical programs as well this fall. Not surprisingly, of course, health sciences at the top of that list by far, but also think of nursing programs, right? But that's followed by business, public safety, manufacturing, and IT. So we have, of course, a lot of programs offered on our college campuses. Lastly, I'll be really brief in the interest of time. New and immediate enrollees, we did notice that our new community college enrollments, meaning first time at our community college students, dropped 10.2%, which is a sizable number. And then we have information here about immediate enrollees. Those are the students who just graduated from high school in May and are now showing up at our campuses in the fall, are matriculating in the fall. Those, again, sizable number, 55% of those are coming in with joint enrollment experience. And the total number that we have there represents a quarter to a third of Iowa's high school graduating class. So community colleges remain a major pathway for all students coming out of high school. With that, any questions I can answer?
Do you have any data on how the students in, like they do two years at a community college and then go get the four-year degree? How they transition to the four-year college?
Yeah, absolutely. Our students tend to do, often outperforming native students in four-year universities. And we can, we always talk about that with our Commission of Community Colleges reports. So if you'd like, I can make sure we draw that out and when we do that report in late January, I think it's when your board meeting is. Otherwise, if you'd like it sooner, let me know and we'll pull last fiscal year's data.
The vertical articulation, does that go well? We had a fuss about that at least a decade ago.
Yeah.
Maybe that, but.
Absolutely. I mean, transitions between sectors is always a challenge, right? We see it between high school and college and between different colleges, right? We have great partnerships between our community colleges and public universities. We have a liaison advisory committee on transfer students, working on transfer issues. We've been building these transfer majors, which are clear sort of program-to-program structures, right, to support transferring, for example, in business or in criminal justice, to work through those issues. And, you know, I think our institutions are having good dialogues about how certain courses transfer to make sure that those are as seamless as possible. And of course, our Board of Regents colleagues always share with us the data that shows that it works well for students, but we always hear about the challenges that exist. And I'm not going to sort of say that there aren't in particular program areas or in particular that students don't have, don't run into some challenges with transfer. It definitely happens, but generally speaking, we've got good partnerships working on those.
Comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
You bet.
We have a scheduled 15-minute break, I think you take. A short, at least shorter. We're scheduled to come back at 2:00. We're scheduled for breakdowns. Everybody comfortable taking a break?
Patty's like, yes.
I would say shorten it, but we always stay longer, so let's just, we will start back up again at 2:00, David?